All right, I have some thoughts on both everybody. And now, so you know, she said people like to come together on it. Hopefully, you set up a solution to discuss our city and its needs. And as a starting point, why is all the council members present? Do you offer invitation and council member?
People seeing community as members of the community, we're grateful that they're here. In this beautiful area, we are grateful for all of your people in our city. Especially our appreciative folks who care tonight. We ask a blessing on us, we can make decisions, we can continue to keep our city as great as it has been. To make the best decisions forever. We are grateful for the leadership you have to serve the nation. Great, you are a great worker. Seeing each other, we say these things in Jesus' text.
All rise. Will you do? I meant one of the things, you know, why we cannot see. All right, thank you, you're welcome, thank you, Ben. So, obviously, the first segment of the meeting is a public comment. But I do, Glenn Anderson, who was a very talented director and well. He has one again, a very video presentation that I think lays out exceptionally. An overview of city finances and how those finances are allocated. And so I would like to actually start with Glenn's video presentation. And then if you're there, we can open up a conference and very good questions for your service. So Glenn, if you please.
Assuming according to seven cities and other entities across the state will propose raising taxes this year. Our city is one of those. This video is going to explain why. And yes, the last thing anybody wants is a tax increase. And that includes city leaders. Inflation's hit all of us hard this past year. Over an above a pay price, nice, continues our walk and let it go. But the fact is, people are getting hit with this all over the country. If we combine the annual rates of inflation since 2020, we had a nationwide increase of almost eighteen percent last three years. Some construction materials have gone up more than that in a single year. Inter, beauties, power, and we started feeding the paint and every road repairs, economy, living increases for employees. And that can't help but translate into higher property taxes. So in what specific ways does all this impact us here in Brooklyn Hills? Well, let's look at our budget. Now, the past couple of years, these videos have taken residence on kind of a tour of the city budget. Looking at things line by line and explaining how the budget works. Those videos are still on the city YouTube channel and they can help you interpret this year's budget. If you'd like to review the whole thing, you'll find the budget posted on the city website. In this year's video, though, we're taking a little different approach. First, let's talk some bottom line numbers to create the sixth budget. City staff person in budgets for the individual areas. This year, those needs ended up over two hundred and sixty million dollars. But our yearly revenue was only projected to be around one point nine. So that was about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars over budget. So our owner, finance director, needs to work and move the budget down around two point one five. To do that, they made a lot of cuts, but they also had a plan for a little over a million dollars property tax. That was like one hundred thousand dollars more in taxes than we budgeted for last year. To cut that down, the city council moved a hundred and ten thousand dollars from our capital projects fund. This was actually money that was left over when we bought our fire truck. Because the financing was cheaper than we expected. Then offset our property tax increase and dropped it to a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And we got another reduction. Our budget was actually thought up in April, in the past year. We estimated that our property tax allotment from the state would be around eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But when they sent us the actual numbers a couple of months later, it was eight hundred and eighty nine thousand. All on thirty two thousand dollars more. A full amount of a tax increase, to about fifty five plus dollars. The Utah Tax Care Association estimates that to be around ninety nine dollars a year for each household in our city. Or about ninety dollars twenty five cents. Oh, so was thriving with tax increase? Well, let's start by looking at some of the most significant items in this year's budget. On for us at home, utility costs for the city are going up from thirty three thousand five hundred dollars to forty seven thousand dollars. That's nearly fourteen thousand dollars, one of the next three sixteen. Then there's snowplow. Two winters ago, saw only cost us about thirty thousand dollars. But this year, we were up over fifty thousand because we had so much snow. We're keeping it there in twenty twenty four and the winter continues. Our attorney costs continue to be high, even though much of the legal action connected to an ongoing risk dispute with the city has been resolved. Unfortunately, there is no, well, it's a little too big. And our insurance money is about exhausted, so lost corporate maintenance will have to be more than our own harm. Police surveillance going up about two thousand dollars. That must be the general inflation, but also because our officer has been promoted to sergeant. He's a longer paid now. This is a brand new budget item this year called fire viewing redemption. We've hired three firefighters to clear brush throughout the city to increase our wildfire safety. Now, this looks like it's going to cost us about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, but not really. Because if we look at the revenue, we actually expect these firefighters to bring in about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When we hired them on what state we've had a wildfires. So we should end up making about thirty thousand dollars off it. Roads are one of our biggest expenses and we always struggle to keep up with it. This year, we're budgeting a hundred thousand dollars for general maintenance. But unfortunately, the contractor tells us we should be spending two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more every year to prevent deterioration. And that's assuming the roads in good enough condition to do preventive maintenance. A lot of our roads need to be completely redone. This is a budget item we always have to compromise on because we never have enough money to cover it. Finally, the salaries and wages of our city staff are always a significant expense. These appear in several spots on the budget because our people are paid out of different areas. They include administrative, roads, and snow removal, among others. And increases here will fund things like cost of living adjustments and hiring a new deputy recorder. Now, this seems to be an area a lot of our residents focus on. While many feel our staff wages are well earned, others suggest they're too high. Well, here's something to consider. First, in 2020, a study was conducted by one of our residents who worked as a professional in human resources and physician classification. He compared our staff wages with others in the state and his data was used to determine appropriate compensation. Although to be fair, the past couple of years, we may not have dealt with inflation. By the way, the wages of all public employees, including ours, are available on the Transfair in Utah website. Because they're considered public information, you can look them up if you want. Second, some suggest this time for another salary study. Well, there is questions. This time around, we'd have to, do we want to extend those funds? And what would it do to your relatives and employee if your employer were continually questioning whether you were worth what you were paying? And if the new studies show we were actually underpaying our staff, well, do we raise taxes even more? Third, some say, well, if we don't have the money, we should just cut salaries, people leave what we hire. Okay, but in this job market, that might be easier said than done. Jobs are plentiful and applicants are scarce. For example, when we opened our position for identity recorder last November, the city got just one half. We hired them, but she left there in three months to take a position elsewhere. So now we're looking again. The truth is, those appointed with our city staff, I'm a big seller. Many fulfill multiple job descriptions and the opposite sacrifice personal time to serve the city. We feel for it. So these are some of the more significant expenses in this year's budget. So there's some challenges with our ring. How is Brooklyn Hills compared with other Utah county towns and our ability to raise money and pay our expenses? Well, in reality, it's hard to make a ballot comparison between us and any other Utah county town. Why? Well, we have some unique differences that tend to limit our revenue. First of all, it's not hard to see the differences in housing density between us and towns like Elkhart or Payson. We already built a hospital in the hill, we have fewer homes per mile and fewer property tax barriers. As a result, we need to have a patient home. Now, we mentioned that the slope and climate in mountains like Rhodes has a lot more wear and tear down about it. That's another added expense. And for most cities, sales tax is a primary source of revenue. Wouldn't Hills have a kind of unique problem here too, because we have very low business in town? It works this way. When sales tax is generated by a business located in the town, say Spanish Fork, Salem, that town gets a genuine share of the tax, around fifty percent. Another portion goes into a statewide sales tax pool. And because we have little or no commercial activity here, any sales tax revenue we get has to come out of the pool. Those funds are distributed by population, we don't rule town. So we get just a tiny fraction of those funds. Our twenty twenty four budget projects around two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. But what if the sales tax revenue projected for Salem in Spanish Fork? The difference is pretty staggering. Now, we're not complaining. Less business activity, larger lots, more breathing room, influence wildlife. That's why most of us moved here in the first place. But it also means there are comparatively fewer of us to bear our city's expenses. So the bottom line is this. Nobody likes a falling tax increase. And our city leaders who work hard to find ways to cut expenses and put our money to good use. But there are some unique things about our city that may get more expensive to maintain the services we all want to lead. On the other hand, we give those savings and a little bit of life style of so much as residents and residents.
Yeah, thank you, Glenn. And I hope some of you, Glenn, some of our, at least as far as I'm concerned, my position respect the city finances. Obviously, we don't know if it is, it was some of you may have very pointed questions regarding this, who knows? But I want to give the council an opportunity to think and think of, say, and then it's hopefully time over for you. I'd say holding the march, you have anything you'd like to say at the beginning or not?
The first thought. This is my sixth time going through this. And it's each time it's been here, it's been difficult, but what I've learned about our city and the way the state of Utah handles taxes, particularly property taxes. It's talking a lot, it's talking to basically, if the city wants any kind of additional dollars. Then they have to go through this process. The state of Utah doesn't give us another mechanism. When we build more homes and we get more people living here, the city doesn't get any additional money. What happens is all of our property taxes go down because it's spread across all those different people. So the only way to get additional dollars, actual dollars, is through this process. The interesting thing is that if we're doing some looking at each individual person. Is that even with this tax increase, some people's debt, quite a few people's taxes went down. And that's because of the additional building. Willows Hills is in a growth mode. And any city that's in a growth mode has higher taxes. That's just the nature of the world. Once we get built out, then it will kind of stabilize a little bit, but until then, this is the moment where it. And then the last thought that I, and you know, again, after being through this a few times. I, I kind of asked myself the question, why in the world do we want higher taxes? And the short answer is, if you're thinking of taxes as a bill. Then you're thinking it the wrong way. Taxes are an investment. Contemplate for just a minute, what would happen to your property values if you didn't have a fire department? And you couldn't get fire insurance? What would happen to your property value if the road in front of was completely torn apart? What would happen to your property value if you didn't have ambulance services? Or you didn't have sewer? So by us putting in money to the city to maintain it, to keep it nice and to keep it the way that it is. We are really investing in the value of our own homes, our own property. And making it possible for us later on in life, hopefully much later, to recoup that investment that we're making over the long. So I think if we look at it as an investment, I think it's a little less painful and hopefully we can look at it as just keeping our community nice and safe for all of us.
And thirty percent of the property taxes from how much went down? Thirty percent now. And forty percent stayed the same, but then fifty dollars. So okay, well, fifty dollars already, because what I was seeing was a lot of people's were going up like four dollars, five dollars. So those are the percentages and I remember in sort of like every address that I went and looked at the taxes and the route staying lower or higher on depending on the percentages. And the reason for that is because values have gone down. So this year, our property values went down six percent for most homes. And that's because they were all way over inflated and then with rising interest rates, prices went down and homes were assessed for less. However, it doesn't really make sense because my house was built in nineteen ninety four and my house assessed higher and my taxes went up. So as I went through it, there were a lot of them that I recognized who it was or I recognized the home. And I looked at them and I'll be honest, some of the decisions that the county made didn't make a lot of sense to me. It seemed a little lacking because there were, most of newer homes, their, their values still went up. It was some of the older homes whose values went down, but not in every case. So one of the concerns that I know, and I can help anybody that wants this, but I know that there is a senior citizen discount. So if you're on a fixed income, you can go to the county and you can get your taxes discounted. And if anyone wants or needs that, I'm happy to help you, I've actually helped some people do it. So you can reach out to me individually and I'm happy to help with that.
Yeah, digital research and analysis also do big loss, do everyone sign and how was property increase?
Yes. I took every, so what you can do is you go into the county and just search the city of Willen Hills. And then it pulls up a list of tax ID numbers with all of the addresses, so that includes empty lots and everything. And I just went in between work because I wasn't super busy the last couple of days. So I just went in between and I looked them up to just kind of make a count. So yeah, it included everything.
In there, meaning to say, okay, so I was asked if we could come up, say your name, and this is our only microphone. And I would point out, it's held together by a band aid or a next game, I'm not sure which, so we're not extravagant next. So if you'd like for it to be better, so again, just say your name and address any questions if you want us to hear.
Okay. My name was just getting a EMT captain up here. It has recently been brought to my attention that there were some questions, concerns about the way that the fire EMS. And I realized that probably most people in the city are not well protected. And so I thought that I would do that soon. Well, you need to know that everybody on our department could leave the city and will get a full time job being firefighter or anything. We are trained to the same level as any other department in the country. We're federally regulated, you have to have the same training hours, we have to pass the same tests. So it's washed. So these are very conservative numbers, if you wanted to err on the side of the law. Last year of twenty twenty two, we logged more than fourteen hundred training hours. We've been on seventy five calls, forty six of them were medical. And probably majority of those between one and five AM. Thirty two fire calls and we went on twenty mutual aid calls, which is what we believe our city to go help around the city around us. They call us out. We figured that we spent six hundred and fifty hours actually on a call. So those are the times that our majors went off and we ran out of our. We've left birthday parties, we've left family dinner, we've left all sorts of things and we just brought everything around. So we have no way to count these other hours, but I would like to list the other things that we're involved in. So we do school tours of our department. We're asked by schools to come down and give informational presentations. We do Willen Hills Days, the EMS Fire Expo, which is down in the city. We go to countless meetings in the county, in this, for the state and for our city. We do the trick or treat. We do the four of July and twenty four of July patrol to keep our city safe from fireworks and fire. We also get asked by Salem every year to come down and cover for them. As they do their Salem news, fireworks and stuff and remember Spanish Fork. And then none of this includes the time that we spend planning, prepping, restocking, ordering supply, making it on our vehicle. Brian and Loz ran for two hundred hours last year. Just working on our inventory, making sure that everything ready when we get a call. Hours and hours and hours and hours. Okay, so for all of this that we do, we get one teacher here. Which, this is my new teacher and I already saved it, but I have to wait till next July to get a new. So we give our people a bonus at Christmas, just a little thank you. That amounts to roughly three hundred dollars for an EMT and three hundred dollars for firefighter. A lot of us are cross street, we do both. And so they're walking to town. And then there has been a concern about, we do an appreciation dinner for our people every year. So it's a chance that we can get all of our people together and we invite their spouses. Because this is really a family commitment. When one person in your county is a member of our group. And in the past, we have held it in a city building, but that only adds to the hours. Who has ever come in general for city people? Right? But it's a lot of work, it's a lot of hours. And so we have chosen not to ask our people to put hours in preparing for their own appreciation dinner. So we spent eighteen hundred dollars to tell our people thank you for all of these things. All of these things do not include the physical and emotional toll that this takes on us. So this year, we have seen some really hard things. We've been on some really hard calls. And it's harder when it's in your family, where people you know, how could people you love? But we do it because we love our city. So the other thing I wanted to talk about, oh, and so most of us, EMTs. We buy our own EMT cans because we would like to have some protection from blood, oil, fluids, right, that we don't harm our, right, our clothes? So we buy our own cans and so that we can have our stuff that we need to take our patients right in our pockets. We buy our own foods, you know, we have our own snacks. So then I wanted to just talk really quick about the fire and purple side. So there's also a big concern about how much we're spending on our internal. First of all, this was discussed in the city council meeting, several options were brought up. Lots of, you know, tools, what the different options are. But who do you think your average would get? I mean, actually, I wouldn't get, but like, probably a bit. So I mean, we're fit, but not that fit. So we need equipment that isn't going to kill us, okay? Like, they're heavy, they're far, right? Which they have been. And that's with all of our gear on, how much is our gear weighed, fifty pounds? So all of our gear on in the summer. I have been with a partner in a training that has hit the ground and needed to be lifited out. If there's anything that I can do for that not to happen again, we're going to do that. So the last time we used the Jaws of Life in the city was just recently. I have to kid you not, every person went, oh, she's wrong, oh, she's wrong. Because they don't know why. That's how old our communities are. So when we use the Jaws of Life, it's because there has been a major accident. It's because the person inside is switched. We need to get them out fast. Like minutes matter when somebody has been switched in here. And we can only do so much until we get them called. And so we have to sit and watch these people switch their vehicle. And that's not what you can do until our tire guys can get the door closed. So the other thing, so what I think is really interesting as I, the money that we've spent, we spend almost our whole budget goes towards things to serve our community, right? Medicals, even the new fire term is for our patients. So I just want to bring your attention to what we do for our citizens, okay? So there is a fire governing, so it's the National Fire Protection Association. So this is vital for all beings fire, for both the USA and Canada. This agency dictates clothing, coats, apparatus, tools, helmets, et cetera. This agency is end all for all beings fire. So the NFPA says, NFPA eighteen fifty one, the standard that establishes requirements with selection care and maintenance of structural firefighting protective clothing and equipment dictates here is ten years passive manufacturing should be retired. So I brought my own fire gear. This is what I wear. So I have worn this literally on the end of those fighting house fires, car fires, this is what I wear. Okay, so let me go. Is a tag, my gear is from nineteen ninety nine. Okay, so right on it, with my shroud is from nineteen ninety five. So we're not, I don't feel like we're spending so much money so that we can be an awesome person. I mean, we're not for a market anyway, but at great sacrifice for ourselves, I mean, don't tell my mother that I'm wearing this tank here while I'm fighting fires, right? She's still watching my kids because, because she won't want me to die. So the other thing that I quickly picked. Okay, is something called an ISO rating. Okay, let me tell you what that is. ISO is used by insurance companies in most states to evaluate fire departments for the purpose of establishing insurance premiums in the local areas. So we are given a rating by the ISO. That directly is reflected on your home insurance. So the better our city's rating for that, the lower your insurance gets. Um, unfortunately, because of our big fire, you're definitely on the radar now of insurance companies. They're watching us close. Uh, and so. If, if they come in and they do an audit of us, they find out that our gear is fifteen years past. Retirement age or with our new engine, if we have not gotten a new engine. Because ours was too old. Or. The other thing that we do is last year we started going around doing fire assessments. On every law in the city, again, the members of the fire department did that. We mentioned every law in the city to a fire assessment. You know, like we can do that for ourselves, we can do that for our residents so that we are ready. So I get that nobody wants to ask me. You know, I have felt the inflation, I have three kids on mission and need it home to be and my food budget has gone through. Again, but. This is not the place to cut. You know, and in fact, I would say that we can be more working. So that we can help our people do so much so that they can go in, be safe and confident that they're gonna be okay. Thank you. I just wanted to be good to first clarify some things that who was actually fake and who was on the chair and having his work. And do you have guards here handling yet? How many is worse? Okay, ten thousand, do you know the total number is?
Yeah, so. We cross, yeah, fluctuates a little bit in the year, we do people on top, so it's got about twenty people on the department. Um, we have probably got applicants that are certified. Um, we don't have, you know. We accept volunteers, some are certified, some aren't, a lot of probably we have our department certified. And probably Chad, I don't, I don't want to interrupt, you're gonna get a lengthy answer. So we've got about twenty people on our, we're all considered volunteers, there are no full time employees on the fire department, uh, even aspiring on the volunteer. Uh, so, um, with that, that's plenty of our people on the department are certified and either being. Um, and so we average about, as Richard said, for about twenty people, we average. Uh, roughly three to five hundred dollars per person that we use in stables, um, outside tonight. And really, honestly, I was doing numbers earlier because I, I heard some of the questions. Um, it doesn't recover their specific, just even after themselves, it's just an appreciation to their presenting, I think. Um, for the work that they do, so there's a lot of potential into what will use all volunteers that we are. It's more of a just a basic, so yeah, roughly twenty people on the department, probably a little more than average.
Fire must be important to you. We're all tied. I mean, her, her back to her. And. Everybody's coming to ask you what. I don't make a lot more than anything else from how I'm spending years. But, and so that's what I mean, I don't know what's happening. Um, and then everybody else just gets that once a year Christmas time, end of the year, three to five more bucks. Um, maybe maybe a fire train officer is a little bit. Thank you.
Well, finish the story with perspective, I think.
Yeah.
We could add a lot of information.
Absolutely.
That is our perspective.
And more than happy. But for people to come and ask questions, you know, like. Periodic rap about on Facebook, I think is not a good way to have a constructive conversation. I am more than happy to have a conversation with anybody who has questions about the department and I know Ted is too. So. Yeah, I don't do, absolutely.
So I'd like to use it for sound, because it is, what is it for?
So a lot of our budget is operating between your, so private funds means since they take a bit of money every year to maintain. So a lot of those operating, maintaining our, our equipment, I'd say that's a majority of our budget. Um, and then also we have to replace equipment, we try and manually, um, to replace some of our equipment. For example, she talked about some of our equipment needed, you can't afford to do, replace all the equipment with. So we try to do a little bit of that in your, keep up on it, first low orders for. Um, between system and replace that. Um, for example, right now our, uh, for S D's, those are the past to be there, the year case, the past and everything. Those are all no longer made by the company that, that we get those from. So they're outdated and they're about ten thousand dollars a piece replaced. So fire department is very expensive, but it's also what helps to keep our ISO rating that you're talking about for your insurance is keep up on all this. So we know we can't afford to lose, so. Majority of those operations, the equipment, maintenance equipment and then replacing.
Right, and I mean, the equipment is, you've got medical equipment since COVID. You've had to buy as, as way surpassed normal inflation. So I'm in an order, uh, pre-COVID, making exact same order in intel. So medical equipment is worth it.
And it was already pricey.
And it was already banned, it's pretty pricey. Not a ton of competition in that market.
Thirty bucks for Canada. And not living in a town.
And you, yes, it's extremely expensive. So the I, um, and then they pay for training too. I appreciate it for our members to go at the time.
You should have to give them a wish to that shooting.
So that's granted by the city.
Yes, yes.
That's the act to select only three or four people to go every year.
Right, state equipment.
I should be able to stay, right? I go to the captain, I should be like, anybody who wants to get the training or the yearly. Ex-prot is statewide, should go, can't do it. Can't do it. I have to pick two or three, four people every year. And then I, uh, don't spend all of my budget because we're gonna need to. And so it looks like I have money to bash over and trying to be wise and swirl that away because we're gonna need to be wise. And I know that Salem responds to our calls. They don't respond because they're better trained than us, because I don't have enough people to stack ambulance twenty four seven. I need two people on an ambulance twenty four seven to be able to transport. Um, I look at the numbers, it takes me about six or seven minutes to get to your house, Salem won't be there for at least fifteen. One minute's matter, that's a lot of time.
Okay, you gotta make things work, set it, it's better, yeah. Well, now I'll just say.
Oh, yeah, Salem can't keep their staff, I mean, it's, it's a problem.
So, can be very invested with fires. Okay, uh. And I hate to, uh, break it to all of us that fire MS. It's, it's lacking behind. As Lance video, I think, very secondly pointed out, uh, it's the low density, the lack of commercial development. Those all make for an expensive place to live, so, uh, I appreciate the moderation of that episode. Um, that, that's just one piece of, just a lot of something to say. But anyway, do anything, take a call, ask a council member or myself a question.
Uh, what?
Yeah.
What? I think, oh, but that's why I'm supposed to. Uh, so. Please say your name is.
Ron, Ron Fuller, been here about, you know, you're a little weird. Uh, I should, um, so you're, you're kind of, uh, this description of the process, right? You need to like, so. You could always kind of, you know, whatever. You add that up and see if you're going to perfect. Of that.
I thought my teeth.
Right, so I heard my ass would be the best person, the best to ask. What do you think? Here, here, I turn a square here.
Do you not see, you know, you know, it would be. And what does it?
I'm sorry. Why?
We get a hundred percent of the profit, that's it, we, we ask, well, you know that.
You know, you want to start a, that would be a false.
Yeah, so. Here's, here's a breakdown of that, so. Only as soon as we can, since it's, you can't, it's up to a bill, when it most get through. The monitor, if it's that support might be. That portion, so that turns out it's the worst portion of your total task force. Yes, yes, yeah, kind of, so, so if I were to add, you could go forward, she did, add all of them. And I said, the vulnerabilities aren't to that, or no use, of that portion can not be very, we say a lot, reinsurance of. And, uh, all right, and then that's used as to call on all of us. On the general, like, I'm the general center, the water, this is to what it is, on the general, that's, yes. He's had the, now, is it really transparent, like, if I were going to start doing on the website, like, by here, it's. More or less, no transparency, word money, cost, and trying to mean, it's, it feels very broad. Yes, it's a mistake, but, so on the web, that will be, it will be the same one, who wants to, like, be able to, like, fire, that requires that.
Hey, Chris, are you guys super?
Oh, sorry. So, yeah, that's all, we do, just one question. And now is one more, one other question, is, is, you, you, I wanted to evolve in, uh, or any of those, I want to be more involved in. All of the, uh, there are now, I mean, let's focus, I don't know for, it's most, so, so this is, well, I would, it's a number in comments. So, yeah, yeah, we just. And then there's something, so I probably, it's like a video longer. Yes.
Music is loud, we didn't see, bye. Yeah.
Let you all make sure to, uh. Actually, go ahead. I'm saying, looking so, so, um. I have that transparent budget, what if, if you go and look at the budget, it's a little difficult to read. Um, but, uh, this is the third year we've done a budget video. And the last two years, we, we sound a lot of time by line, we also explained how the budget work. What the different columns mean and stuff, and most, I think if you said in this video, those videos are still on the same YouTube channel. So if you want to go look at the, at the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty two budget videos. You'll get some insight into how to read the budget, I think that probably. And it was not to be able to.
Okay, good question, I thank you, and, and really, nothing is done in all decisions, even if the budget is set up for decipher. On paper, any of us are only calling call, like, so you get your answers, so. It's there, yes, please come up.
Great question. If you all present sales tax, we should all thank me for how I was on the computer. I'm sorry, I'm here now. For sure. It sounds, it's, it's, I'm just, I have a, I guess, yeah.
You need to put tax, well. But I, I understand that, you know, what, it's, you need, there's a shot, I would. No, it's wrong, that. We don't get anything. System. Where that is, of our, we do that, that's, it's, you know, that's, yeah.
Based on how it is. Ten, it's not how it is. So that score gets seventy percent short, they get fifty percent within media's.
You want the maximum?
Based on our future, very, you know, the ones.
This is, I'm still, some of those, they're not on the shot over here because.
We get wherever this is located, they give fifty percent of that on sales tax. The rest of it is sent to the state and then the state can allocate it to the city based on cooperation. So our cooperation is fifteen hundred people, um, with very, very sharp shape of that, so all people. And so that's what I'm, we encourage, we encourage you to shop locally. Well, that doesn't to that, we do get, we do, this part, years ago, um, that's. Changed the tax structure on a federal level for online sales. And so we were at that point, uh, after that decision, we were able to then start connecting local sales tax to. And so on an online sale, it happens, it tasks for your address that enters it, so in, in that part, it was less, I think. So that, that keep on shopping.
All right, well, the mic, it's set for you, so I can actually, you have any other comments? Questions? Do you have any problem with that, this base bottom?
Just gave your, your, I'm, I'm Josh. Um, realizing this. Call me, Fisher.
That's last name, too.
And. Um, I'm sure it's, we're talking a lot about, you know, the budget and sure, but this, what exactly are we choosing? I don't, I don't, I don't want to fire the company. I was here with the fire, was, that's how a fire department. So what exactly are we, most, are we given a choice of? Either tax increase or if X, Y, Z, I don't know if that's what was.
We're kind of around short. That's the biggest thing, I think.
And, and is there a list of other things that we can staple of like, X, Y, Z? And do we, people know about these things? Cause I, I don't.
We now, our tax increase went down significantly higher because we're in ten shells of dollars, uh, the budget. That we would have spent.
It's what I'm saying, I've got real, so. Do the language, and we keep, or, or, here's a thought, I have. It's all.
Anything, step.
The one thing that I, I've been in office for about a year and. This is, do my, second run is maybe probably red. They recently had a, a request for property tax increase, I think it's the first time in like twenty years. But in the yard, I'm gonna talk about, spent twenty four million dollars, I, I can even go to little snack one. And.
And. I actually tried to reach out to mayor, see, what is your secret, but, uh, they got more commercial, but, um. The reality is, is we don't have any budget. So, I mean, we are definitely trying to make priorities, and, but, but the reality is, like, I mean, we heard a lot about firing, and that's the public purse. It's, it's in desperate need, I mean. You know, I, I may not, this might not be a popular position, but I actually think that we should, um, look into a road speeding, that would be a dedicated D. And we, that we can. Put aside specifically, you know, roads, or roads of water, because. We aren't keeping up, that's, that's the challenge, and it's not like we're building multi-million dollar city centering. As I point again, we got masks, we keep holding up our own micro, our projector doesn't. So, it's, it's not like we are living in luxury with what we have, we are, already kind of, forms the, frankly, we probably shouldn't even be cutting it. But, you know, and I'm saying that you don't need to be a tenant, the last thing I want to do is cross, as being unsympathetic. To people's incomes, and people's financial situations, because I, I understand, I get it, but. Of only nine dollars can make a difference in some household lights, so. But, but all we're really trying to do is balance the lesson of two meetings, and so, we either let our infrastructure go to rot. And then, we incur a massive expense, having to rebuild everything, or we try to do it a little bit, I'm what we can, and hopefully. Kill the whole thing, so. Anyway, I, I can answer your question, Josh, but, but. The reality is that we are constantly trying to manage our priorities, but in terms of where we can make cuts, and, and let's, if you address this. It's a very popular one to come back to, the staff has paid too much, but, but they don't, and, and, and so, that's just an easy one to come to, okay. That's it, uh, and, and, but, but it's not, uh, it's not a meaningful solution, and, and because. I mean, you gotta look at, if you were salaries, and you're below market, what, critical stat, that's all we have, we have a critical.
Uh, I'm, yeah, I'm in army, I guess, uh, no. Do you?
Do you? Yeah, no, I don't, I don't, that's, to me, a, a, a great concern, that there, we are, we are running solely, that there just isn't anything, so. Uh, I, I find the answer that, uh, some of want to hear, that that, that is, it, it.
So, Josh, just to give you an idea. Couple of things that were on the bill for the, as the city need, so one is a new public works building. We have a lot of property that's being stored outside, that's actually not okay.
Yeah.
Um, it's a new public works building, you might have noticed, um, that we used a lot of salt last year. One of the things we try to do, is we try to buy our salt in the summer. The reason to buy the salt in the summer, is because we pay for our salt by the pound. Salt, it's not wet, it's cheap. You get more salt, but we don't actually have a big enough building to store all of the salt that we need for winter. Last year, we had to order three additional times during the winter for salt, so, I mean, I don't, do your public works building, a place where we can store our equipment. That was one of the things that we kept two years ago.
We still have this year.
And we should put it back in this year. Um, as far as roads, you may have noticed with some of the rainstorms that have been recently, that we've had some problems with, um. Rock and so forth, going across roads and, and that kind of thing, so being able to build culverts, um, that's another thing that we had to cut this year, it was on the. Um. Trying to think of some of the other items that we, that we cut, so these are the things that were, when the man says that we're. You know, basically, what we're trying to do is we're just trying to maintain, we're not adding additional projects. The fire truck was a new. Project, if you want to think of it that way. However, as a city, we'd actually been saving for that fire truck for a couple of years. So that we were able to put the some money down on, and then finance the rest. Um, and again, going back to what Rachel said, one of the reasons we had it happening by the threat is for that isolation. Because our other fire truck was past the use of life, it was, it was just too old. And so, in order for us to maintain an isolated, we had to have that equipment. Goes back to the whole jaws of life, one of the things that they're gonna do, when they do with an auto, a car, truck. Is they're going to be looking, you have this on empty, I can, there's a list of things. How that on that transfer is not allowed to be on the scheme of the file. If you don't have that stuff, you can't be there. So we're having to equip it, and so, you know, again, it's, it's kind of a balance of saying, hey, we're going to equip it. But, how quickly? And we can't do it all at once, so we're buying little bits and pieces as we can, or each year's, but, I don't know, does that help at all?
Well, yeah, I already. And, you know, that's still valid. I honestly, us as people, we even have. Yeah, yeah.
Do we, do you? Here's.
I just don't know what's to raise, maybe. Increase taxes, you know, or increase revenue, increase taxes, there's other, it's, or you go where. You can't, you go over the costs, move our expenses, if you're serious. Nowhere, lower expenses, that's fine, that's, that's a good question, is there anything on the table, we, the people, choose. Instead of this, we're, we're all the same, I, I raise. There's not going to be a lot of, that, that's a good question.
Yeah, and so when you're, you know, you're being. Yeah. So, very good question, and, um, when you know. Is, are there things that are, like, if we were. To, after this meeting, so, after the process, keep them right where they were. What would have to be checked? So that basically the question.
Or, yeah, what are, are we presented with options?
Things, or, yeah. It's probably the office play, yeah, a choose between our.
Also, we, you know, we talked about it, cash flow, and all, people have been doing since January.
This is nice, fundraising, or, uh, start supplying. Same areas, wow.
So, I mean, I was, by the. Not.
We're on cable, so, these are. Thank, thank you for asking that question about revenue, so one of the things that's all, uh, I don't see grants, when we're getting, this small revenue source. We actually are. So, we've gotten huge grants over the past couple of years, in fact, and Kerry worked with, uh, FEMA. The basin was built, that was a four million dollar grant that we got. So, the city is getting grants, they're getting a lot of additional money into the city. Um, a lot of the work that. I'm gonna call out Ted, does, is looking for different grants for our water system, so for instance, when we upgraded our water system. We were able to do that, we got one, one million dollar loan. You know, our, total part of the, without, through, now, I'm thinking about, most of the million that was granted, and the rest of the loan. Yeah, so.
Ten interest.
As there were ten. Yes, and, and the loans is zero percent interest, so you can't get better interest rates than that, so, definitely, all those things that happen already. We're just, um, so, uh. As far as additional revenue, like, commercial, that's been brought up, should we bring a commercial into the city? Um, there's two sides to that story, one is the city allowing, the other one is getting somebody to. Invest and bring in commercial enterprise that think that they can make money. So, we control one side of that, we just control the other. So, if somebody wants to build a service station, get on the roundabout, great, and I hope you can make money.
If we only get, would get sales tax, so people who think, well, let's just put in a doctor's office. There's no sales tax in doctor's office, so, so it has to be something that gives us that fifty percent of the sales tax.
So, yes, to answer your question, yes, all those things are constantly being, it's not a one-time thing, we, we've looked at it for three years, our, my manager, the, the jan, one, um, chairs. The chair, she's on. Is constantly looking for those types of opportunities, and if you'd like to be a member of that, I'm sure she would be happy to take your name.
Okay, thanks, thanks for getting that suggestion, yeah, Eric, and, and also, just quickly in response to that, so, a couple of options that Dave mentioned are commercially, there are some conversations with the treehouse development that is. Being developed, uh, on the Davis property, um, uh. I don't know which direction, beyond the nail loss, there, there is some talk of. Possibly some commercial development nearing nail loss, there, again, I know that that's a boring topic, but that's an option, or increasing density, but, so that's kind of very, I mean, but nobody really wants either of those options, I, I actually, fortunately, I think that. It has its place, but, uh, anyway, so those are kind of options also there, you know, we always. See, if we got, when this, costs, there, all right, Eric, there you go.
Okay, so my name is Eric Cole, um, one thing I've noticed is I've attended these truth and taxation hearings throughout the years, and Washington City Council meetings. Is I always find that people come to the truth and taxation hearings, wanting to find out about the budget, and forget the budget has been having for the last six months, and was set. And now it's just approving the rates to meet the budget. Last year, I went to the Nevo School District Truth and Taxation hearing, because Nevo School District has a much bigger increase to our taxes than the city ever will or did. And there was two hours of people raving on the school district on what they did to increase taxes, they're doing, and then after all of that. I watched this school, or get up and say, thanks for all your comments, literally, everybody yay, or day, everybody were yaying, they said, beat over a jerk. And literally, everybody in the hall, jumping, jumping, going, they didn't listen to us at all, nothing happened, we just talked for two hours, and nothing happened. The thing is, is everything happened in the last six seasons, we want to have pit pat on this, to, like, all these council meetings, and all these, and these meetings. And be part of that process, so when it comes to the truth and taxation, then I'm here just to see if there's anything that I missed, which means some of these are, they intend, some that I didn't. So that's.
And what, what Ethan was just saying, is that we're, we're a political subdivision of the state. Um, you can't run things autonomously, you have to, um, everything we do has to be compliant with state statute. And so, as Aaron said, we worked on it six months. Obviously, we're now not, we made from. By law, we have had to make our decision by the end, uh, middle of June. So, from, from January to June, that's when we hashed out almost every council meeting, plus we have one meeting that's just dedicated to budget and only budget. We don't talk about anything else. And so, as we go forward, we don't get our certified tax rate from the county until just a couple of days before the state requires us to have our budget in place. So we don't even know how much we're going to get. So we're making a budget without knowing how much money we're going to give in taxes. And so, when that final vote comes, in the, our second meeting in June, um. We're just, we, we've hashed out the numbers, we think we're pretty close, we kind of guessed. How much the county or the state is going to give us, but until just a few days before, we don't know. And so that's why, then, you hurry and work out those numbers we saw on the video, how much we have to cut it very in, to get it to where we only need. You know. What was it, fifty, was it fifty four, fifty five thousand dollars, is all we need extra? Uh, just to try to maintain that quote. Um, that's the thing to keep our fire meeting, to keep our snow cloud, to keep our employees who are also going to receive statues on all of the things that are in charge of the city. You have to have, you have to have, um, and train, and we train, just like our fire people, have to have finance people, have to have public works, we have to have our water tested so many times a week. You turn on your water in the portions, you're expecting it to be clean. Our public works director has to be there every week, testing that water, driving it to be tested. So we have a water main break. We can't afford to have water just so well everywhere. That equipment, you can't just hop in the hole and fix the water, because there's also electrical ones, you needed that truck. Those are expensive expenses that really come up for us, that we're not always anticipating, but we have the budget for none of the, none of it. So there's a lot of moving pieces that we don't have control of, that are assessed to us on by state statute, or national statute for, for environmental maintenance and for earthlings, so. Just so that you will, we're trying not to just be forbidden about this, but we also have very. Poshous, understand the boundaries that are set towards.
Thanks, Gary, okay, um. We have a comment, Brian.
What, what, I'm happy. I am on the fire department, I dress against, they're all stop, I'm not speaking for the fire department, that's racial, intentional. Um, I'm speaking as citizens, and I share your views, and I've been really being involved, I've been, almost called, see, since, last couple of years. And I, what I can tell you is, the need to, to use truth and taxes, and, and, every single time. Every time, no matter what it was. We never governed, you know, the taxes enough. Because we never get everything we. Because we never get everything we. We never get much, we never. We're we're dead enough to get by, we're trying to get enough, right, we are too, you didn't. Tell them to tell them the dollars out of what each other has. Can you talk, they talk them down from, or any other? I need this much, I need this much funding. They talk them down, and then at the end, these people, oh my gosh, there's, can I please help this council meeting, watch my mind. I travel a lot and I watch my mind. They hash through these things and have to cut them because they know what's gonna happen when. When we're in tax, I remember the first time you did this with Mayor Craig. And this room was standing. We were captured. And and they ended up cutting even what they planned to that day, I remember the thing. We ran a tax increases. How much about twelve percent or something like ten percent, and it kind of sounded like six, and guess what, roads didn't get fixed. Um our our other things didn't happen, there are some things that we as citizens are doing without because. We're not just taxing enough, we have no tax base, we, I chose to live here, right, I I came here. Twenty sixteen, I think. And I knew. That we didn't have any commercial revenue. You know, I looked at things, I knew that we were going to be putting in paper and fiber, and I'm a little bit scared of that. Uh that's critical for me. I I chose these things and and many, I didn't think there were a long time to gain yourself this stuff, and I and I apologize for that. And I I can just regret there's this stuff, and I get a discount, I'm taking that, so I get a discount on my taxes. I get I get a a discount because of that, but and I'm glad that that senior citizen's good too, but. I don't think we're raising taxes enough, but I know we can't raise, I'm not I'm not saying we should be raising taxes, but understand that. These guys are part really, really, really hard. To get it where it's at. And there is no more wiggle room, and guess what, the roads don't make it. Because we don't have enough of those. You're, you know, we got a a public works director that, yeah, we've heard this couple minute, a minute or something like. Change vehicles, how much of the amount of water running out of six inch pressure at ten? How much is about one thousand? Well, I have no knowledge. And cost. Credit dollar we repay for him to drive that truck home. In my, and I believe this council, they did, so then there's errors, cancers, hell, in my opinion, that's worth. To save that water. When we have what water main grid. As soon as that pressure. So if we have a fire, that just, we've got a problem. Sorry, my topic is fire department. I don't think we're raising taxes enough, but we can't raise taxes anymore. That's what happens every time, we say they need to raise it up here, they cut. Cut out as much as they can, everybody, sometimes you can cut more, yes, well, we don't get the stuff we need in the city. We don't live in a place full of drug addicts. That's my personal opinion as a resident here, I knew that when I moved in. And it hasn't changed, honestly, desire, my wife said, our house burnt down, we're building on the ashes, if you love this place. So that's why I moved here.
Oh, no, I have a comment on your comments. So if you look at it, um at least the fact that we have, it has cameras that says the employee ask. And this has changed, but we when we initially get this, the employees like department has, they gives numbers of what they need. For all their costs or anticipated expenses they have for the year, and so then you have the call that's employee ask. And then the mayor goes through it, he has major proposed, and those are always a lot higher than what we end up with, we end up. Slashing and about that whole six month process, we go through and we say. You know, a permit you're not going to get to when they're fifty K for a strip store, you don't have it, so we slash that part of the budget. And uh they asked for new equipment, and we say, you know, that's beside the cards this year, and we slashed that. So that's part of the process that we go through, so if you look, you see, um this is kind of the the final, but even still it's. Which were the employee asks got, you know, lowered, and then the mayor's got over it, and then we'll be, and it's different. So it is, it's probably a process.
And for most of this, it was not a question, I think the fact that a few brought things up. Um to me, the issue. Uh the budget and where it's at and the needs and going through, I I get that, right, my person's property is ridiculous, what what is that, right? So I'm in a whole different thought process, but wanting to build and stay here because I fell in love with this place, but it had. Nowhere is questioning, and I can tell you when we first got here, and we just didn't, we showed up to city council meetings, we showed up to every one. And we didn't felt like we were listened to, so we quit coming. I'm a busy person, uh you know, I push ten to about our stay in office, I. I don't need to go somewhere to get information to then feel like the people aren't being heard, myself. So I think the element of bringing, from what I've seen in life. Is that people just don't necessarily feel like they're being heard prior to these decisions being made. And the reason is they're not coming, so they're not informed because they don't feel heard, so this is a bigger. Issue than just the budget and passing the budget, so that's my opinion on that. The second piece that was a um a mother to someone who's a firefighter. Um what was. That sets me worse to think that they're paying their equipment, uh run money and volunteer. Um that's a safety matter, they're here to serve us and do that, and they haven't any common that's. Siphoned at any other department in this country is a siphon for uniforms, and that's we would say included in if people ever had a key. Maybe it's some of the stuff costs, and so rest not only get a priority to outfit and training our teams. Um by using money around or mixing it so that there is larger value for those things, to me, that's really important. And then I feel like when I come to these things, and we came this time just because it was. Talking about tax, and I thought, hey, you're special, that property tax members, but what happened is just ridiculous. And so and I heard the lady say, we decided to hold off on them, and they wasn't nails until they could help us figure it out. So we're waiting on each space on how these continue to flow. Would I prefer um commercial come in to help release that? Over density increases, yes, well certainly. But I feel like the discussions constantly are like. The truth phone examining where we discuss the same things over and over again, expecting different results, we're not, because we're not thinking outside the box. And we're not reaching for other things, and we're not bringing it up so that we can get that input and make change. So rather than looking and making change to make it work, so we can afford all the things we need. We just constantly doing the same thing, and it's just not working. And so, sorry, that's all I can say.
Can I make a point about what you're saying? To look fast, I agree with you. But I also want to. I also want to go back to what Gary said. We're living in some of the state. They're the ones that set the rules. And we have to play within those rules, it's kind of like, you know. Maybe the sports example, paper balls are weird game to me. I don't know why I can't get my pictures on the first step. But that's where the rules are. The same thing is true with our. Like, I wish, and I, uh just so that everyone's aware, we meet with our congressional delegation. Every year. And every year we say the same thing. The way you are going out sales tax is not fair. It's not. The fact that Spanish Ford gets all of our money. Because we have to do the prosecutor. Isn't fair. But that's the rules. So we're going to continue lobbying, we're going to continue pushing. But really, we're playing underneath the rules states sets. So, again, we can apply for grants, and we do, we can ask for more sales tax, and we can meet with our congressional delegation, and we do. And you can. Ask for road funds which barely, like last year got approved through the state Supreme Court. Yay, finally, we can do something there, so. But but we're, those are the constraints for you. If that makes sense.
It does, but again, interest, we're repeating that we're doing, you're we're checking into this, we're lobbying that, we're doing the same thing over and over again. And expecting to get a different answer or a different option, and it's not working, and so I know we have laws and we're governed and there's. You know, here with all this, um and so.
See outside songs, mostly positive, as well here, now I'm lying, as you're doing that, I've been on the council now six years. And so I I have institutional memory, but I still love me doing raises.
And I I now using cyber law machine. It's saving. It helps you focus, but sometimes we get caught up in that, it's work. It is, I must not have somebody, when you say my experience in the last two or three years here has been, why are we keep doing the same thing? We're not getting anywhere, and so um. Uh you asked, yeah, I just shared that, I just shared.
I will for years, but I really do.
But I think we need to start right here.
My number's can I do you now, on the website, and I have.
Uh, happy to do, my name is your number.
Jerry, I feel you, um and that was one of my same sites, sat scour the ways potentially with me. Right, so according to that, helping bring in potential, attention to general revenue that way and state sourcing maybe expense. Uh we talked about attention and partner, which is cities are taking on their garbage, splitting that revenue with them, um. Then we found out there's another building to be in compliance, and only one staff, there are a lot of truck partyer, because things to high heaven, and. So we then thought, and so we are going through a lot of those drafts, uh one of the things that we're, Chris is my opinion. And I can't say anything for the sake of. We're very looking at it, but one of our biggest issues has been talking about a sales tax requires commercial implications. Um if we have a finite number of real estate with the intention be available, if we provide, we want to have a. More supplement, what is just very small property. And so what I have been doing is, is I have been thinking, how can we potentially, and Chris and I are looking into the legality of this, so it's highly preliminary. Please understand if you're looking into it, hence I'm sharing. Um and this thing not confidential at all. But one of those things is, is we don't have, we have a finite shard asset real estate option here in the city of Little Oaks. What we don't have a limitation on is potentially digital real estate. And so what would it potentially look like to have a digital? Um. One, I will break, like, a digital commercial result in Little Oaks. Okay, that's about as detailed as I can go at this point. But back to Diane's form of Amazon. Right, Amazon's beautiful thing, we're gaining money by purchasing from Amazon instead of us taking centers, going down, possibly leaving a lot of money spent for. But the problem is, is as Amazon keeps growing, as you first start seeing better options on shipping times. That sales tax now that it's shipped from outside the state, you get sales tax from that transaction. If we're buying it, it's coming from the solid distribution center or those closer ones, we don't get a sales tax from those. And so what we're trying to figure out is how can we try and drastically increase the percentage of times we trans out? As residents of Little Oaks. And that sales tax does come to this. And so we're looking through that, we're looking at what our options are, the bad is potentially one of the drastic, drastic way of what we, um one of the thought to you, John. To your question, this is one of our drafts, I believe, is the question of what are we having, or what's the increase going to? We'd love to be able to say is to go into the new fire truck. We increased it by X, problem is predominantly what we increased is paying for. Is increasing fuel costs, increasing asphalt, increasing, it's all the things we're going from the inbound to um to our. Rachel's talking, her house is just low. You're not getting any more rich for the increase beyond sustain and in connection with them. The hardest articulating, what we're going on. And the way that we're supposed to future when we may look at that. You're speaking for myself, oh. Is maybe making lists, if we raise it X amount, these are the assets or potential resources we are getting. Come with helpless bone or space, right, and maybe maybe packages, I have a little possibility of that, Chris is probably saying, wow. We thought. We sure appreciate you guys coming here, I sure appreciate your voices. This is a great forum for this conversation, because we're able to see to its face, we're able to see to its emotions, whatever. So it's thank you.
I think we should raise, what we propose by one percent, not one percent goes to our fires market, not bidding. Keep enough minimal. But we are starting ourselves. I mean, it's a public, we are not comforting them totally. Can I, except for that fire turnout cost three thousand dollars. Four thousand, four thousand dollars, like, it's a crappy situation, it's just. We're just feeling nothing, if I think I'm really starting to, it helped absolutely. Absolutely helped, but we are in a tough, tough situation, so my son's one of the wildlife firefighters, and he has five old pants, you know, pants are quarter wet and they're orange and pink. The booty chair sits for seven hundred dollars, the shirts are a couple hundred, he's got the helmet and all the things. Um he's had it for years, but he's, even when he worked for the state, he thought he had a lot of that, so. So that's not just our fire department. Um probably a big city, so they got a lot of funding, they can buy those to the people, but my son's always had it right. And it costs him thousands of dollars, and this season when it started, his pants were falling apart in a lot of places. He's really lucky that I sewed those, and I still can patch those things back together. So. In cities, our machines, greatest item, which.
Yeah, my son is one of the community that shows the the fire, he cares.
Which makes the city money, that's another big reality case.
I I was going to comment on it here, to your point, that's like. That's. Ted is. Credit system, like, um they are pointing against. A lot of, I think, with our new engine now be able to potentially deploy in fires, then a structure, and then it actually generated this. Last year generated, I'm not sure where we are this year, I mean. So maybe I shouldn't say this so far, she could have been asking for a fire. But but let me also just say here, I I I think it's important to manage expectations, because I I do believe. Uh you know, still are legal issues, I I've heard it time and time again, there must be something you can do, but the reality is. Justice drives slow, and and sometimes they're just far, a ton of options, and and when it comes to planning in your city. Uh it's funny because like even when I, I think, oh, the urea girl, I voted Chris, you're all voted Jody, and say, well, one of this, oh, yeah. You try to let them believe, and so, you know, it it definitely feel like we are kind of settling the whole, well. Think that that isn't part of that, that we don't have some magic solution that awaits us finding it, I just think that there are some. Limits as to the pilots that we can rock, but it looks too, you're smart and. Sensible and forward thinking in how we allocate those resources, but but I I have found that, I you know, I I I don't know that it's necessarily insanity, it's just kind of. Stuck in this phase that there's really not a whole lot of options, but I'm looking for the best virtual world.
I, Brandon. It has to be said a specific way, sure, you you can use news videos. So when when you fight for grant, you can grant it your credits. Like, if I put it. You have to follow the parameters of like road, and you have to send it away with grant.
So.
Yes.
My point, thinking is that we have writing grants, lots, and managing grants takes a lot of time. Those that was that you would, we don't get sick for for that, for reporting and for keeping everything in place. We've probably, I don't, you know, over the last. Uh few years, Chris, we've, we've had a million dollar ramps that did have natural, but. We've had hundreds of thousands of dollars grants that have come in for a variety of things, they're through the city that really were tired to. To apply for those and to um try to bring in those increased revenues so that we don't have great access. And we're a candidate for some of it, but not all. Part of, one of the issues that we see too is where they fifth class city and a second class county. A lot of things are are um allocated based on county size, and so we're the same. And so we're the same, in the same pool as Provo. For some of the money, we we applied for some waters that are better water system. But they can, they can give Provo, you know, fifty to a hundred um million to upgrade the water for. We were asking for like two million just to help us grow. But the ROI term of investment because of our population base, it doesn't. People out for those who are trying to figure out where we're at. So we have tried really hard. If any of you are interested in helping with that. To committees in our in our city and if we allocated money for all of those volunteer hours that are supporting all different companies. Um. You would nobody surprised what revenue is given to us in terms of time. Commitment and the ability of people to to really help our students some in different areas. Uh but you have to be welcome privately to volunteer, to come and be part of it. Yes.
What did he stop? Three sources.
Some of them, some of them, yes, but we don't always qualify. And there's grants are very particular, there's. There's money available, but you have, they're silent. You have to meet as a cat. In order to even be put in the pool. And then you find out if you're later, if you go to town. Then you're told what else to make some stuff. And just as Chris said, um then. Based on what you wrote, everything has to go towards that. You can't just say, oh, we now have this money and this is our need. So we allocate as you believe that we can afford. Exactly. There is, so having a very, very challenging. The other thing here is that we talked about with somebody as public sector money. We're only allowed to spend it in certain. And some of that is mandated by the state. And what we can spend it in. So like if you're a business owner, you're private industry, you can say, oh. We are short this year, we're just gonna cut this. And nobody cares how much after COVID you went to a restaurant that needs to have six days of menu choice. Now you get one. Then I have three options. Because they could figure out once you cut pretty darn fast and knowing you were still coming. We don't get that option. There are certain things that we have to handle. That we um that have to stay in the budget no matter what. Waterfall is one of those things. We have to on fire, we have to do that. We say, of course, and we hear the stories. That that Rachel told us and and Diana, you're right, you know about what's happening in Kinti. Unfortunately, that should. And we know those costs that I mean, and as part of yourself, you said, of course, we want that. And then we look and we see our our snow coverage, which is not going to be the right state. We choose for public safety. To spend that money. That's why states doesn't plan all their roads because they don't. So if they can cut it out of their budget and say, kill it, people. No, we're not gonna do that because what more is it for our quality of life? To have still a cloud driver who's willing to work. For nothing. Basically, and be available from October fifteenth to April fifteenth. To do that middle of the night shift because looking for smelling against the ground, they're out. We try for one year to contract for dinner at a company and their contracts say they don't come up the hill until it stops snowing. Now, we've been here. When it hasn't stopped snowing for over twenty four hours. We will be aware, right? Look, it's all a lot of different things that the budget covers and to Josh's point. There's not like this, we're not looking at things saying, should look at this, this, this now. All departments give us stuff, give us their business and we cut almost everything that has for. We'll just maintain. And that's still like Ryan said, first, still not luckily all the current. We want to make sure that it's been spent, but. Until we have additional revenue and there's all these certain things that we can do. Stay to increase revenue. You can't just say, here we are, we're going to go for it, just as business. So grants are our best option unless we consider some commercial. At this point, we don't have any land that is going to commercial. Those private property owners. Just like all we have private property rights. Even if we zone a commercial, they don't have to make it commercial. They can build their house there. Is that's what they want to do. So. We have to be. We've been trying to do some community development, trying to figure out what do we want? What do we want our vision to be? Do we love our quality of life? But when I was escape. And we need to, we need to not just get city companies, but in our. Our separate communities, that's where ideas are developed. That's where the questions can happen. So if you're really, you know, let us not mention, we know, but you want us to. So that we can get close to the state, you know, to the town side. So I don't think I love the rock and sand on the right human. So. Result from having. That's just a little, uh you know, kind of our, your one hand's tied behind your back and the other is. Be emotionally pleased for the things that are needed. If we don't have, you know, one of the things that our fire department is, they get out to a power and they smell it. Our snowplow drivers are there to escort them to that person's house to break out of the city. So that that ambulance gets to where it's going. Other cities don't do that. Snowplows don't make personal phone, personal um calls to your house. Just because you need to go to the hospital, but our snowplow drivers do that for our. Those are the kinds of things that happen that you might not have been known now. And yet. That's how we run the little city. And we 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 love our city, we all love our city. This affects all of us as much as it affects you. And we don't want to do, but we, but there aren't a lot of other options on how we can raise money. At this point.
Diane?
Diane, Diane.
Okay.
So fire department. My lead to stop forwarding them. And yes, in every industry you buy your equipment. I haven't had an ironworker for forty years. His own safety purpose is a harness, his welding equipment. Yes, he paid for, but it's a full time job. He's getting paid for. When you talk into here. You should not be expecting to pay for safety from the goods for your safety above giving your service. That's. That's my opinion.
Thanks. And last one.
I said, I don't know, but you go for your.
One percent. Ten dollars. Okay, I'm getting a no for my financial strategy, but. This is what I.
Let's start fundraising for them.
Well, I I was gonna say.
Get, get your boots out.
And and let me also just say um. And and when you, you know, like every proposed increase in expense. The word I just take, they're kind of, it feels like, and and you know, I I think it's relatively two voices, but. But they're magnified, they're magnified. And and so it starts to feel like that's what you tell me. Feel about the way we spend money generally. And again, it's not that I'm insensitive to the impact that it can have on on personal finances, but. But I, my ask is that all of you who are here and support this effort and support uh what you're suggesting, Diane, and that. That you do get engaged and defend even the city's expenses when it is taken task because those who show up. They they. Please, I I just think that is important, can you sure that I I believe. That those voices reflect most of the community, but that's not a voice that's allowed us, so. I I think that those who are like minded really shouldn't make sure that there was hurt by those who are making these decisions because. It makes a huge difference. Uh somebody else, Joey, you better.
I was just gonna echo what Janet said, I still have an opportunity to be here. There's one right there actually, so they can hear me. There's an opportunity upstate to make a contribution and help them.
And. You can go anytime, um we have people that are like, you know, or living in streets with specific things and. Or disturb or Santa Claus, you can come down to the city anytime if you want to make a donation and. So you can, I.
I'm.
Hey. You had a, you want to online to, here's to make a comment. Yeah, thanks. Well, thank you for your input. And really your encouragement works that that makes a big difference. So with that, we'll close the public comment. Wish of our meeting. And we will move on to item two. Uh resolutions twenty twenty two needs, that comes to adoption of certified tech. Okay, so we have an option like that's number five approved.
I'll say.
Seconded by council member one. This is wrong, all right?
Maybe maybe to just kind of just say what that actually means when it says approve the certified tax rate. Just so people are clear on what that means.
Yeah. One reputation, so whatever city. We've established or actually is gonna be, that's why I was shaking my head. Whatever that is. Off not to be, well, for just one of us. Next year. Unfortunately, that's a challenge.
Okay, there is that.
I want to make sure anyone I've been announcing.
Great, thank you. Yes, House Member one.
Yes.
House Member Brad, yes. House Member Alvis, House Member Jason, yes. Okay, motion carries. Uh and I. You know, we do both sessions, so I please that uh. We accept the vote with your adjourn. I'll let you know to your knowledge of your adjourn by next super late.
I'll say.
You can hear, thank you, Derek.